She did have to steal my.
Good morning, this is Tuesday, April first, two thousand twenty-five, we're gonna do all April's jokes today. They do not do. That's alright, we're good. Um, we have Cheryl Spleen with us today, acting as an assistant secretary. Um, anyway, welcome everybody, we have Matthew with us today. Uh, he's gonna share with us about Knox County litter and then the recycling program, give us updates on uh, in the various projects that he's involved with, so Matthew, thank you for being with us today.
Yeah, um, so we'll get right into, um, so the DKMM Solid Waste District, we are continuing another year of household hazardous waste take backs. Um, these will start next week, they're gonna be on the second and fourth Wednesdays. Residents will have to call Jenna Hicks, the DKMM District Director, to schedule their drop off, it's gonna be an opportunity knocks. Um, every time this happens, obviously, things like fluorescent bulbs and gasoline, um, you know, any household hazardous ways for residents only, um, can be taken back for a dollar a pound, I think this is probably our, I think it's about our fourth year of using this format, so. Um, people can probably remember, we used to do a once a year event, or if you missed that Saturday, you gotta wait another year, um, so fortunately, we worked it out, it's us in Delaware County, they're gonna do the first and third Wednesdays now, but the Knox um, program was the first one to switch to the schedule, and it's just worked a lot better, um. See, our residents are encouraged to sign up and take their stuff out, dollar a pound.
Where do they take it?
Uh, it's gonna be an opportunity knocks, so, and back at the main brick building, kinda back there where people can take.
So we have a scale back there for stuff to be weighed?
Yeah.
Okay?
Nope. And it is a lot cheaper than going directly to hazardous waste companies yourself, dollar a pound is dirt cheap hazardous waste, so I encourage people to use it and get rid of their stuff correctly.
And did you say any particular hours?
Um, uh, they're usually within that eight to four, nine to five window, um, but I think it usually, I know they break for an hour during lunch, but there's usually a couple hours in the morning and then a couple in the afternoon.
Okay, and you do say the second, fourth Wednesday, so the first Wednesday would be the ninth, uh, so the ninth and the twenty-third of April? That's what's on the calendar.
The first Wednesdays. Yeah, so the first one in Knox will be the ninth.
Okay.
That is correct, next week.
Nineteenth twenty-third, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, next thing, so obviously, I'm a board member for the Friends of the Kikosing nonprofit. We have been about as busy as humanly possible, um, we did get two major sponsorships this year, we have Ariel and then Republic. Ariel kicked in some funding for, just to support us overall, and then Republic Services, I met with in person and they donated on a ballpark, it had about two thousand dollars worth of dumpster services. So when I am out there with my volunteers, you know, all the stuff we get every week, we get to get rid of it for absolutely free. Thanks to Republic Services, we have a good relationship with them, you know, obviously, I work with Luke McMillan every year, um. So yeah, Republic is being very helpful, um.
When you say Ariel, was that an Ariel Corporation or Ariel Foundation?
Um, it's Ariel Corporation was technically the one who we got a hold of, we sent some stuff out to some of the the businesses around here, just to, some of the larger ones to see if anyone wanted to support us. Um, so we're very thankful for them, um. We get roughly ten to twenty people each week, twenty would be a good week, but I'd say ten is about standard, so basically, what we're doing is the river cleanup, we go from point A to point B, you know, the district takes this section, whatever, 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 there's all these different segments. So our thought was, instead of just going out once September, let's get after it more than you know, usual, see, you know, the first week in March, it's like, let's go meet at Memorial and Lower Gambier, so we are picking up roadside, you know, the Park District access points is our meeting spot, so that's kinda what we've been up to, um. We have one this week, next week, the week after, but it's just a March and April process of one after another.
And if someone wants to help?
Hmm.
Where do they go to find out where you guys are going to be?
Um, so as far as Friends of Kikosing, our kind of home base is just our Facebook group, which we have grown to quite a few people, more people than I've ever seen in person, that's for sure. Um, but yeah, I mean, getting on with us on Facebook's the best thing, we always meet for these events at nine AM at the public access. Um, but if people don't use Facebook or social media, and they're free to email me, or get ahold of me uh, by calling my office and you know, say, oh, this week we're at Riley Chapel, next week, or you know, so on and so forth, but.
And then what do they need to wear?
When they come? Clothes, toed shoes, dress for the weather, you know, the drill, we um, I'm glad Cheryl's here, I'll go on the record, Friends of the Kikosing, we are a rain or shine group, week one, we got snowed on and everyone's like, huh, and then we just kept going, you know. Uh, this is a very tough group, volunteers, no complaining, you know, outside of like, if there was a tornado or like a very dangerous thunderstorm, you know, uh.
You might consider not.
We might consider it, but, you know, in case we get that rare Knox County tsunami type scenario, um. But yeah, we're getting after it, everything's going well, um. I was able to take all the tires we've gathered to the city event, so uh, this previous Saturday, I co-sponsored Knox County Tire Recycle Day with the City of Mount Vernon. Turnout was a million times more than last year. Last year, the line was insanely long, and we filled up our bowl in about an hour. And the mayor on the spot's like, hey, do you wanna kick in some extra money so we can keep taking stuff, and he's like, yeah, we'll figure it out. And it was pouring rain for that, um.
So on the river cleanup, are you going in the river or just along the banks?
It's along the banks and the roads, like, we're not, no water craps just yet. Um. But yeah, we've been getting tires off, you know, the side of the road or wherever, so I was able to take those out to that event, but, you know. Obviously, these government subsidized events are good because people don't wanna pay five or six dollars a tire, they'd rather pay, and they get averaged out to about two dollars a tire. Um, so I'm hoping the city turns this into an annual event, um, if anyone with a township, village municipalities out there listening, you can apply for grant funding through DKMM and host your own, so you know, Howard Township could host one of the Bill to Frederick Town could host one uh, through DKMM, and then it's your option, if you put it for Knox residents, city residents, whoever. Um, the city was playing hardball with me this year, they're like, kicking a thousand dollars, we'll open it for Knox residents, so I went ahead and did that. Um. Education, uh, I'm giving presentations this upcoming week, I think, starting this Friday. I will be out at East Knox, my alma mater, back at it again, um, so this year's presentation, I always do something different when I go in there, you gotta switch it up, you can only talk about sorting recyclables so much. So you know, in the past, I've done oceans, I've done rainforests, I try to pick exciting things, so this year, I think I picked the most exciting topic, which is our local wildlife. It's not very exciting to just explain why litter is bad, you gotta say litter is bad because it affects this animal, or you know, you gotta have you know, you have to have an angle of why not to litter, so, um. I'm super excited to get into that, I'm also working with uh, those of you who were in the commissioner's office last year, remember, I brought down, I had a job shadow from the Courier Center, Will Steeman. Will is now at the NAS, and he is continuing his environmental studies, so we are trying to get something in place to hopefully schedule a waste audit. Cause I was, I pick on him when I see him at Happy Bean, I said, you know, is the NAS recycling or students recycling, um? So we're gonna try to line something up there and help him get some data for a project. Um, now onto the compost facility, I spoke with Justin from Green Machine, they are you know, shipping away at the job of the century out there, um, obviously, we've been running seven days a week um, from seven AM to seven PM. Um, nowhere around it, that's an all-time amount of usage, we have residents, small businesses, we have larger businesses, we are trying to keep it to where it's, you know, you have to be a registered business in Knox County um, to use the site. Um, obviously, we were accepting bids, but you know, it'll take us a while to, you know, get any real news on that, um, so for the time being, we're just working on.
Getting things ground up a little bit.
There's a fair road.
Yeah, yes. Seven four two five, fair road. Um, so the grinding should be done late this week, um, and then for residents out there, obviously, it's mulch season, go get stuff, you're doing us a huge favor. Go get firewood, go get mulch, please take it out there, it's there for.
In the, in the bids, we had one or two bids come back, one, I mean, again, that's like, remember, we've talked about the cost and what we're gonna do, so those have been sent to DKMM, Jenna's reviewing those, and then she'll get with me and we'll discuss them, and then I'll bring those proposals in to you to consider what you'd like to do going forward.
Yeah, and would Matt, would you talk a bit more about how the people can go out and get mulched? Uh, cause I know that people are, yeah, is thinking, well, springtime, I need to get some mulch, how do, how do they do that?
Yeah, um, so obviously, you have two kinds of mulch, you have your nice bagged mulch that you can buy, that's pre-dyed, it's treated, you know, this, that, and the other. Or you have this stuff, this stuff is kind of a low-grade mulch, um, it's really great, especially if you live out in the country, you know, and you have a lot of mulch, you need to put down. I mean, it's perfect for that, um. It's just not dyed, you know, if you have a tiny little flower bed, but um, either way, it is an undyed natural mulch of, you know, it's just a hodgepodge of the community brew, if you will. Um, but yeah, it's not compost, it's like, uh, you know, it's not a community roots food grade compost or anything, it's, it's literally just ground up sticks and leaves and brush and all that stuff. Residents can go out there, uh, seven days a week, at the time being, from seven AM to seven PM, you go in there, the only rule is you gotta load it yourself. We have talked about maybe the possibility, cause some people, specifically, some older folks always ask, is there somebody out there with a loader that can help me, unfortunately, there's not, but um, when we met about the compost facility with Jenna, we talked about all the possibilities of things we might be able to do in the future, so. Um, I mean, at this time, residents are just encouraged to go out there. You know, it's a, it's like, not all you can eat, it's all you can load buffet, if you will. Um, but obviously, it goes from full of material to gets ground up, and then it's literally just, it takes up a lot of space out there, um. So like I said, it's a win-win for the residents to go take it, and it the more that residents take, the more space there are, um. Obviously, we've not had a whole lot of extra space out there recently, so.
So what do residents still take, when we have a, um, plethora of piles out there, we haul that away?
Um, there's usually something in our contract, like our previous.
They get a pretty good amount of the material once they grind it, and then they leave the rest for residents.
And they die, bag and sell it.
It's, it'd be a lot of work, but if somebody wanted to, they probably could, I mean, as long as the material is getting out there and people are using it, I don't care, honestly. Um, as long as residents and small businesses, you know, have a a way to use it and get the material they need, you know, that's the important thing, so, um. Yeah, so more news and more changes coming soon, but at the time being, we're just grinding and hopefully residents go out there and get the free material, um, spring cleanup. So when I came into this position, my predecessor, Randy, and a lot of program managers do what's called spring cleanup, you know. Um, Randy allowed people to get a stipend for it, a lot of program managers believe, you know, if you're a group picking up trash, you should do it for free, but I've continued to keep it to where you can earn a stipend, because there's four H groups, basically, what they do is, they'll say, Matt, we're gonna go out to this road and pick up trash on this day, and I'm like, cool. Uh, here's your vest, here's your bags, here's your gloves, and you know, if you get up to X amount of bags, you get three dollars a bag. If you get more, you can get three fifty, if you can get more, you can go four dollars. There's a max of a group, if a group went absolutely insane, which has been done before, they can earn up to four hundred dollars, that's where we cap them, and then we have a big trash drop-off day, or I work with them, um. So we're about to start that, Andrew and I just filmed a promo for it last Friday, so if any church groups, scout groups, homeschool groups, garden clubs, if anyone, you know, if you wanna get together, clean stuff up, get ahold of my office, seven four oh three nine three six seven zero four, shoot me an email. Um, basically, I put you on a list, get you your supplies, and then you participate, and a lot of like the four H groups, they get the checks, and then I know a few of them, they, the leader withholds that money, and then once fair week hits, they uh, bust open the piggy bank, and you know, so it's hotly contested whether you should be able to kick in any money for these volunteer groups, the stipend amount is not very much, if we're being honest, like it's I feel like it's the least I can do to provide some sort of an incentive to get people out there. But in previous years, the spring cleanup was kinda all we did this time of year, but the Friends of the Kikosing program that I talked about, it's technically part of the spring cleanup too, so. Um, but it's kinda my way of also being able to get out there with a group and stuff.
So does the group, um, leader have to sign a liability?
Yes, yes, liability waivers, um, on behalf of your group, cause I'm not out there, you know, it's I'll go out with Friends of the Kikosing, and we all know the drill, and have our signs put up ahead of time, but like, when you go out with a scout group or homeschool group saying Matt cannot go to jail if I do something dumb, you know.
That's how it's worded?
Yes, well, six words on mine, so.
And Chip approved that?
Something like that. Um. So yeah, we are tending to the spring cleanup, and then, you know, this time of year is just kind of busy for me, there's nowhere around at March and April, I don't get to you know, have free Saturdays very often, so, um. You know, this week, there's another cleanup, the next few weeks, there's cleanups, um, and then we're also prepping for Brown Family Environmental Center Earth Day. Which, for the first time ever, we're gonna have a vape takeback thing, so.
Really?
Yes, so this is kind of a modern issue, schools keep confiscating these vapes, and then they don't have anything to do with them. You can't just like throw them in the trash, you know, they might catch on fire or something, so um, there will be a vape takeback, there's usually like somebody with like birds of prey, live music, you know, the stuff, so I basically just sit there at a booth and hand out guides and answer questions, I like going to community events, cause you know, the drill, and people have a million questions, once they find out oh, there's the recycling guy, what do I do with this, how, you know, so big part of the job's just sitting at a booth, um, and then we also have Pheasants Forever Youth Day, that's gonna be twelve, I believe, so, yeah, twelve for the Pheasants Forever Youth Day, um. And then nineteen is the BFAC Earth Day, so. That's basically all I've got, is the time of year, but baseball's back and things are warming up, nothing, nothing to complain about there.
Any baseball questions for Matt?
Your guess.
Uh, anything but another Yankees Dodgers, and I'm happy, I'm grumpy, I stayed up to watch the first half of the Guardians game in San Diego last night, and we got blown out.
Got blown out, yeah.
Hmm. That showbiz, I was on WMVO talking just a little bit of baseball with Tyler yesterday, so. Hmm, this is good about baseball, you know, you can't just lose one game, get too banged up, it's long season, so.
Injuries, injuries, injuries.
Well, Matt, thank you.
Thank you, man. Hopefully, these things don't like follow me. Helicopters, well, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Matthew. Yes, let's, let's do that, we're on Knox County OSU Extension.
All right, we have, um, living and maintenance repairs and operation assessments to the water facilities, this, uh, for our two new commissioners, this is, uh, every year there's a nineteen dollar, um, stormwater, or not stormwater, but a sewer district water facility assessment for the Little Jell-O-Aid, which is our treatment plant, and so that nineteen dollars can be allocated. You know, we can do half and half to the water fund, sewer fund, so Jeff, typically, we look at that, him and I each year, and see what the fund balances are on how he wants to address those. So for this year, um, he can utilize more money in the water fund, so we're gonna do fourteen dollars of the water fund and five dollars to the sewer fund to make up the nineteen dollars, so the first one is the water for, um, fourteen dollars.
In a motion?
Yes.
Uh, motion to approve?
Second. And those in favor say aye.
Okay, and then the second one will be the same thing for the sewer facility, and this is for five dollars for twenty twenty-six.
Take a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
And those in favor say aye.
Okay, then we're gonna have the bad part, but this is the, this Jeff do this twice a year now, any or one, once or twice a year. So when you have, um, somebody doesn't pay their water bill, you can shut their water off, somebody doesn't, if, we do have customers in certain areas down in Blaisberg, that all they have is sewer, they don't have our water, so if they don't pay the sewer builders, you can't shut their sewer off, it doesn't work that way, right, so, um, we are allowed by, by code to put that delinquency on their tax bill, and then, um, they, it can be recouped that way, uh, by the, by this water sewer fund, so this is a list that you have before you, is a list of delinquent accounts that have been certified, and there are twenty-nine of them, um, and those, once you approve this, then we need to, we have to submit this to the Knox County Auditor, and then they deal with the taxes. So these are a certification of delinquent accounts for, to be submitted to the Knox County Auditor.
Yeah, knowing that delinquent account, or, what my understanding is, there are some people, when they come in and pay their property taxes, they'll say, we'll pay everything except for.
That's correct, that does happen occasionally.
There's some that have been on there.
And then the only way it would really be picked up, I guess, in those cases is when the property would be sold.
So they, are you saying they have the option of coming in saying, I'm gonna pay my property tax, but only not to delinquent sewage bill?
Yes, yes.
That's interesting, yeah.
So anyway, we have twenty-nine names that are on there, and I need a motion to give it.
Can you?
And those in favor say aye.
Okay, and then we have approve a sales order from, yeah, approve a sales order uh, for the Knox County Sheriff's Office, this is a new software he's gonna use for the concealed carry permit and fingerprinting, and uh, this will be actually not paid out of the sheriff's budget, it'll be paid out of the sheriff, not his general fund budget, but it'll come out of the concealed carry fund that he has, which is a non-general fund. Fund, and it'll be paid for out of that, it won't come out of the general fund, it's for eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
And that should be approved?
Second.
And those favor say aye.
And this document will require all three of your signatures. And then lastly, we have a um, the, excuse me, an agreement with Modern Office Methods for IT copier replacement. And uh, this is just replacing a unit that they, they have that's time to be swapped out, it'll be one hundred and five dollars a month.
That should approve.
And those favor say aye.
I like, speaking of that, um, in the last couple, um, RPC meeting, Daryl has mentioned the replacement or lease or whatever, the new copier for visual planning, okay, have we got anywhere with that?
I'm not.
Supposedly, he was getting quotes, um.
I'm not, here, I haven't, uh, he hasn't talked to us about that, I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure if he's going directly through Modern Office, or if he's maybe going.
My recommendation, my, my recommendation was that the system should all be the same with one purveyor. Therefore, if there is a problem, we have a purveyor that houses the rest of this stuff, and we're not jumping all over town trying to get somebody to take care of a copier.
Sure, yeah.
So I can reach out to him if he had not reached out.
He has something with Modern Office Methods.
I know that the contract is in the works.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Are they ready?
They are.
They are, so I'll table my, my items for you till they are.
Come, come on in, ladies. Just so you know, this is a no giggle zone. Strictly business in here.
Okay. It's April's joke. Oh, really, I didn't even think about that, I'm taking up a joke, so.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you for coming in, and we'll, we'll ask that you, uh, um, say your name for our TV audience that's watching right now to make sure that they know who you are, and well, let's be wild, then.
Okay. Andrea Reese with the OSU Extension for each educator. Uh, Sabrina Shirtsinger, OSU Extension Ag and Natural Resource Educator.
Thank you for being there.
Yes.
So we'll let you, uh, I know you guys have this all choreographed out, so I don't wanna get in the way, or.
We do, actually, yeah. Yeah, we do. So we just wanted to come and give you guys, since you guys are newer, uh, an overview of what extension is and what we do for the county, as a county service. And so, we prepared a, a handout booklet about extension and on each of our positions, what we do to show you our impacts that we have in the community, so we'll just, I'll just briefly go over some of the points, so.
So is this a recent photo, cause I thought we had our driveway all done, so.
No, it's not a recent photo, yeah.
I guess, our driveway's, I messed up already, I was.
No, I didn't go.
A little concerned about that.
No, I didn't go out and take a all right, I don't prefer that. So Extension's mission is we connect, we make connections with people of all stages of life, from young to children to older adults, uh, from families to children to farmers and business owners, community leaders and elected officials. And then to highlight, our first ag educator was hired in nineteen eighteen. And then our first four-H educator wasn't hired until nineteen fifty-eight.
So is the name spelled right, or is this supposed to be Anderson?
Oh, it might need to be Anderson, but
Okay.
I, I would have to go back and look at the document. And so then next, uh, just a few highlights that comes from the USDA of how many farms, how many acres, how many of those farms are family farms? And then how our farmland is used in Knox County, and then our rank in terms of production. So we are third in sheep and goats, and that's cause we have lots of, um, producers who raise sheep for, um, more of like a, now it's not confinement barn, but they're raising them for feeder lot examples, so.
Ranked in the state.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then I.
I know it's there, I could, so on the sheep, cause I know when I was growing up, that used to be said, that Knox County was the number one sheep producer um, east of the Mississippi, so.
Yes, that was true. And then our commodity groups, so I meet monthly with each of these commodity groups, we used to have a dairy improvement board, but they no longer meet. So I meet with our pork counselor, Cattlemen Association, and then our Sheep Improvement Association. You wanna talk about your, yeah, sure, so our enrollment has closed for our four-H, so you can see our statistics there, so how many um, members that we have currently, um, we have a hundred and forty-one cloverbuds, so that is included in our total number, so that is age five and in kindergarten through age eight. And then our project members then make up the remainder of that one thousand one hundred and forty-seven. We have a hundred and ninety-five adult volunteers overseeing fifty.
We have a hundred and ninety five adult volunteers overseeing fifty community clubs here in the county. Um, so it's broke down. I did male versus female, so you can kinda see that ratio. Of what our makeup is and then um, how many live on a farm versus rural non-farm? And then how many do live in the Mount Vernon city? And then did give a breakdown also of um, what grade they are in as well. So you can see that off to the side. So pretty interesting statistics as you kinda look through and see where our largest numbers are of our youth. Um, participating in four H.
So the five that are not in school, would they be younger than kindergarten or would they be?
No, they would be older.
Okay.
Yeah, yep. So then, in our office, you hear us a lot talk about producers or the four H clubs that we are dealing with, but we also help the community in other ways. And so some of the things that we see in our office is people come in and get soil tests done. And we send those off to be analyzed and then people want to have those interpreted and wanna know, you know, what do I do with my lawn and how do I spread it? And right before I left, somebody had called and said, I got a drop spreader, but I don't understand how to use it. So it's a lot of training people on simple homeowner things that they um, might not understand.
So if they went into soil sample, what do they, how do they have to bring it to you? Do they just take a spoon or shovel and clump the dirt?
No, so you would have to take twelve to fifteen random samples of the sample area. Three to four inches deep, gather it all together in a clean container, then you bring us about a half a cup of that sample.
Okay, so do you provide the containers for them to put it in?
We have bags that we send them often, but oftentimes people bring them in like a sandwich bag or a. Clean jar of some kind and then we would transfer it over, but if you come in. You can get those sample bags to take home and it has all the directions on the sample bags.
Okay.
Uh, so sometimes we also send things off for plant disease analysis. We get a lot of homeowner concerns. Our office associate has to be able to help people that call in with random questions of, they might not need us, but where. Where can she send them to get some assistance? We do have that a lot. Uh, we also help people if they say, we have a beehive, honeybees have come and what do we uh, what do we do? We have a list of people who will come and extract those for them and. Get rid of them. Food preservation help, we get a lot of phone calls about that. Uh, how do, how do I get my canner tested? Uh, what do I do if my freezer quit working? And so we have resources to help those people. We also have publications and resources through OSU Extension that we can offer to individuals who. Uh, wanna know a little bit more about a certain topic and then sometimes I just listen to people. Sometimes people call in and they just need someone to listen to them about their problem and know that they are on the right track. And so sometimes I'm a counselor when it comes to some of this stuff, so. We do that as well. And then between Andrew and I, we serve on a lot of uh, community committees. Throughout the county and so a few of those are listed, Safe Communities Coalition, Knox County Food Council, Substance Abuse Act. Abuse Action Team, Creating Healthy Communities and Family for Child First Council, but I know there's more that we. Serve on. Those are just a few of them that.
She knew the couple of them.
All of the township hosties.
Lot of things that we do.
Yeah.
When it comes to putting it on paper, sometimes we uh, forget some of those things, so. So then the next page we have, we broke down our funding, so that way you guys can see how that works. And so for twenty twenty four, uh, we had got two hundred and forty one thousand dollars. And then OSU Extension gave us, gives us one hundred and ninety thousand one hundred and nineteen. And then SNAP Ed is a portion of. I guess the state, but we have two SNAP Ed program coordinators in our county, Katie Hayes and Michelle Duffy. And their money is separate. And that's how they operate, but theirs is ninety five thousand. And then John's position is an AMOS fund. It's an endowment position that is in our county. Because you have an ag educator, so you have my position, so we have John's position, which is a. Endowment funded position. And if we didn't have my position, John's position would move to another county. So that's where that two hundred and seventy five thousand comes from. And then the forty four thousand is, these are programs fees that we took in. A big chunk was four H camp.
Yeah.
I will admit that, but program fees, when we have a program and we need to charge for people to come. And oftentimes, if I have to charge for a program, it's because we're offering. A portion that we need to pay for. So maybe it's the cost of materials or the speaker or something of that nature, so. There's where that program funds come in. And then the bottom part, I think is important for you to see that for each of our areas, so for four H. Master gardeners and then other volunteers are, we have volunteers that. Like our extension advisory or many of you know Paul Higgins, he's just a volunteer that's always around in our office. He goes under other volunteers, but they give an, they give hours to help extension, so they promote us, they assist us. They're our eyes and ears in the community and they um, do a lot of volunteer work for us. And so we, I roughly came up with hours and I know that these hours are not true. I do know my master gardeners was six thousand, cause we have a tracking system, so I do know they gave six thousand hours last year.
So you can plan to chip in them so you can know when they're out.
Well, they track their hours and then they have a system that they enter their hours and then I can go in and look at it. But I know our other volunteers, I only, I low cut them hours, like five hours each. So I know that that was very undercut, but. Together they gave us roughly fifteen thousand eight hundred and sixty hours. And if you would look at the value of. Paying them, how much is that worth? And we think it's important to have these volunteers, cause if we didn't have the volunteers. We wouldn't be able to do what we do if we didn't have them. These volunteers. So we make sure that we recognize our volunteers and that we are thanking them. I know Andrea does her recognitions to her for each advisors and awards program and I make sure my master gardeners are. Well-recognized for all their efforts that they do as well. So volunteers are a huge part. Okay, so then the next page is about each of our positions. Now I did put up at the top, the commissioners and the cost share. And so basically, the position cost shares with you guys is that you guys pay a flat rate for each of our educators. At forty seven thousand five hundred. And then that's where Ohio State pays the rest of the salary. And so my position, Andrea's position, and our second four H educator's position is county cost share. But Chelsea, our office associate, she is fully supported with the commissioner dollars that we get each year. So Chelsea is our office associate. She is our support. She runs our office. She helps it so that we can do our job. Uh, she, I told her, could you give me an approximate number of phone calls you took in twenty twenty four? And she's like, oh my god. So she roughly came up with it. She took seventeen hundred phone calls and about five percent of those were people not knowing what services they needed. So she had to be able to say, oh no, you don't need us, you need some water. Or you need the health department, or you need to call the auditor's office. And so some of that, she has to know beyond our office what they need. And then I mentioned a little bit about John, how his, John is an agriculture educator. He and I have the same title, but he likes to go by agriculture and not natural resource added. Because his focus is primarily on agronomy, agriculture, technology and farm management. And then I take care of the rest. So that's where the ag and natural resources part comes in. And so he is. Funded through that AMOS endowment fund. And then there's my position, which I focus on local foods, livestock, forages, natural resources, horticulture. And I coordinate the master gardener program in our county. You wanna talk about you?
Sure. So um, with my focus, I do a lot with the club and advisor recruitment and retention. Um, a good part of mine is also livestock education with the livestock projects and the junior fair. So working um, heavily with um, the senior fair board. And um, being that liaison with them and working with uh, um, Amy with the junior fair part of that. Um, also coordinating Skillathon, livestock interview judging. Um, and right now also covering the second educator, since we do not have that, so I'm pulling double duty right now. Um, so we've been doing some cloverbud things. Um, we had officer and advisor training last night, so. Um, so we've been doing a lot of things right now, um, with enrollment just coming in. Um, lots of updates and things like that going on, so between those two. Um, shooting sports is um, a growing part of our program as well, so getting that information. Um, coordinating that and getting information out to our youth. Um, cause there is a liability component to that, so making sure that all of our members are covered there. So um, lot of coordination when it comes to the four H component of our program. Just making sure the information gets out to our youth, that they are prepared for their projects. Um, they have the, all of the information they need and that they are able to complete their projects and have the resources they need. So um, a lot of communication goes out to our members and the advisors, so um.
And we are looking for a person to fill that spot, right? Do you have applications that come in?
So um, yes, I ended up reposting. Um, the the first round was not promising. So uh, the second round, um, we have the applicants in right now, so we're going through those, so fingers crossed. Um, yes, so.
In 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 a different uh, meeting, Andrea, didn't you say that one of your problems was it wasn't consistent type hours and?
Correct.
One of your problems.
Yes.
Was because of that.
Yeah, so I think that is, that's something that's not, I think, understood. So I try to relay that information to them upfront that, you know. It's not a forty hour week job by any means.
And not always Saturdays off, right?
That that is correct. I um, yeah, haven't had a Saturday off for a while, so, but that's okay, that's okay. I do love my job, so um, and if I didn't, I wouldn't still be here, so. But there, it's a give and take, so you have to, you have to find that balance, you really do. So um, being able to communicate that to those applicants coming in and helping them to find that balance, I think is the key part. Um, and then willing to work with you to find that balance, I think is the key to that, so yeah.
And you're probably looking for someone who's been a part of four H and really understands that and.
I think that is a key part to that as well, yes. If they don't have at least a little bit of that knowledge. Um, I think that makes it hard too. Yes, if they don't have some sort of four H background or knowledge, um. That makes it really hard. You can teach a lot of the other stuff, but if they don't have some of that base knowledge, I think it makes it very challenging to.
Plus it's more of a giving and serving position.
Yes.
So much just for a job, job.
Absolutely, very much so, yeah.
Yep. And then our other two people that are in our office is our program assistants, Katie Hayes, Michelle Duffy, they're with SNAP Ed. And they work with um, individuals to make healthy choices and their eating habits. And so they do a lot of collaborative work with community partners and project areas. So they work a lot with older adults and youth and schools and they go to some after school programs and different programs throughout the community. And they give their presentations there. They often come with tastings, so people can taste their recipes and see how. Delicious they taste when they are a healthy choice and that it's not always taste bad, I guess, for them, so. The next couple pages are some impacts and things that we have done each in our areas to highlight impacts that we make. And so for me, our master gardener volunteers put in a lot of um. Work. I have twenty seven master gardeners. Some of them are uh, more active than others. They have um. Some of my master gardeners are older, so they can't put in that and they have heart problems and they can't do a lot. But a master gardener group, I think, is more for um. Their mental health than just their physical work as well. And then. We uh, we provide community education, citizen science projects, and we offer workshops as well. And one of our biggest projects this year is working with Habitat for Humanity. That picture right there is one of us trying this project out last year. We're teaching the homeowners who are purchasing those homes, are getting those homes on Columbus Road and throughout. About their gardens and we're designing their gardens for them. Helping implement them and then teaching them how to care for those binge of jalapenos. I do a lot of work with on farm research and some sort of insect trapping for um, vegetable growers. And then I do a lot of work with farmers markets as well. And so I've collaborated with the health department to pilot the holiday farmer's market. And then I've helped to get Centerburg's farmer's market open and then I helped Frederick Town get theirs open as well.
So you have a remedy for stink bugs? I see a lot of them.
Oh, the stink, stink bugs are a problem in vegetables.
And your home.
So with um, with some of the work that I do with four H, um, every year I do a volunteer kickoff. So I hold five trainings every year to get um, my volunteers all together. They can choose whichever training they wanna come to, but I do competency training with them, so we go through a specific um, topic every year. That hopefully then they can take back and um, strengthen their. Their time with their members in their club. Um, that is a state mandate that we do every year, so we pick a topic. And um, we work with them on that particular um, resource for them. And then I usually give them things to take back to their club. Um, so that's usually an hour and a half to two hour training every year that I do with them and give them all the updates for the year as well. Um, also, one of my big things is going into the schools and doing school enrichment. Um, most of that now is during after school programming, so I go into Saint Vincent East. Danima and Pleasant Street and I work with their youth in their after school programs. Uh, most of that starts in August um, with Saint Vincent and then most of the time October with. East Danima and Pleasant Street and we go through the remainder of the year. So we do hands-on STEM activities with them, um. Some of it is weekly with the schools. If not, it's at least twice a month I go in with them, um. I try to engage them with those activities by, at the beginning of the year, asking them what are their interests. So I kind of let them guide the year. I don't necessarily pick what um. What I want to do with them, so I let them, so what are you interested in science wise? So at the beginning of the year, we do like a get to know you type thing and then we um. I base my programming off of what they are interested in. And then um, we also do every year an ag awareness day for our fourth graders. So that will be coming up this year on May thirteenth, on Tuesday, May thirteenth, so that will be coming up. Um, so we're in plans for that, for all of our fourth graders to come and enjoy.
So what will happen on that day?
So fourth graders will come to the fairgrounds and we'll have a variety of stations. Um, we get uh, master gardeners are there. We have a lot of the commodity groups come that day. Um, the ag museum is open that day. SNAP Ed usually is there as well, um. We have, oh my gosh, we have horses, we have cows, um, we've had our dog group there before. We have.
Goats, rabbits.
Goats, rabbits, chickens, um, and the kids get to do a lot. They get to handle them. They get to, you know.
Ask questions.
Learn, um, John sometimes is there with his drone, so they always think that's pretty cool, cause he puts it up on the TV. Um. This year, I think we're gonna do some things like with different types of feed with the animals, so they could see what the variety of feeds, the animals. And they can touch it and feel it and those types of things, um. We maybe do some things with bugs, um, so they can see different types of bugs, um, also with um. Uh, Emily's coming with the different types of pelts with the natural resources component, so. Um, yeah, so it's a very short, um, they're only at each station around eight minutes. So we can get them through, so it's a very short period of time, but the kids just love it, they they. But the kids just love it, they, they get a, they glean a lot from it, um, but it's a very short period.
You say it's fourth graders and it's part of the whole county?
Yep, everybody is invited.
And that's probably their attention span about thirty two.
It is, for some of them, it very much so is. So we do, um, we go the whole day if they want, so we do allow them. From like nine to two, if they wanna stay, not all schools stay, um, cause we do give them a break for lunch if they wanna pack their lunch and stay. Um, and then, um, but a lot of them go back for school for lunch, especially the Mount Vernon area. Um, but we do have some schools that stay and then. Because you can't get to all of them in that short period of time, so some of them will stay and continue. So like I have, um. One of my four H clubs, they bring their mini horses, so they get to, you know, interact with the mini horses and things like that, so.
That's great.
Orchards, we bring the orchards in, um. Farm Bureau is there as well, llamas.
There will be all kinds of.
Yeah, yeah, so we have, I tried to have twenty four to twenty five different stations for the youth to go through, so.
Right?
Yep. So we've been doing it. Uh, I shouldn't say we, um, it has been happening, cause I haven't been there quite that long yet. Um, I think almost thirty years now, yeah, so. Almost there, twenty three for me, but that's about it, so.
So then speaking of John, some of the things that John does is he offers, he's very well known for his. Agronomy school that he puts on every other year and lots of people from other counties come typically about the four surrounding counties and he puts on a. In-depth workshop on agronomy and updates within the field and it's a four week long in-depth. Program that they do in the evenings. He's also heavily involved in crop scouting. And helping local farmers with their scouting in their fields. And then he does a lot of on farm research and with fertility, weather effects, he's got this new weather station that he's put. Been putting together right now and he's pretty excited about, he does do drone work. And so he has several drones that he uses and goes out to help farmers to be able to see disease in their fields or to be able to know. What's going on in various parts of their fields. Then our Snap Ed friends.
Before you do that, um, I know John at one point, uh, had a meeting at, uh. Um, at the four H center, and he's talking about the invasive weeds and. Um, those that are coming into Knox County and, and he indicated that one of the things that he had a concern. Was when, uh, the utility companies were bringing these wood platforms to lay down for them to drive on, that. They were bringing them from outside of the county and possibly bringing invasive weeds with them. That would be, the seeds would be inside of these things, so John was, uh, has, is very informative in that area, so. People in our community have concern about invasive weeds, um, and crops shouldn't or plants that shouldn't be there, he's the guy.
Yes, very much so, yeah.
He does a lot of work on that. And then our Snap Ed friends, so you can see they had five thousand two hundred and three participants were reached through direct nutrition education programs. Four hundred and sixty seven direct nutrition education individual sessions. That they put out, so that was between Katie and Tanner, so Tanner was with us till.
December? Oh, December, you're right, no, you're.
He took a state position and so Katie finished those out and then Michelle started in March.
March.
February, March, something of that nature, and so, um, her percentages were seventy nine percent were youth. Nineteen percent adults and two percent were teens.
The seventy nine percent youth, is that? Free meals for them at school or what, what does that constitute? Do you have any idea?
I would assume that that would be the participants that came, that were at her programs, like her, the after school sessions and stuff of that nature, I don't know if.
And the in-class sessions, yeah.
Thank you.
And so with that, we have seen, uh, that we have growing needs in Knox County and we wanna kind of approach that. We have seen that maybe a community development educator might be something that we are going to need down the future in our office. A- and they focus a lot on economic development, leadership development, organizational capacity building and community planning. And so a lot of times, community development. Individuals work with organizations and people in the community on projects that they might need help with, so they would work closely with health department. Or they would work with local food systems to help strengthen those. Projects that are already going on and give support and to help in areas that we can't, so, for example. Uh, with my work, I'm, sit on the local food council, I do a lot of work with farmers markets and help them with, uh, starting them and the rules and the regulations. Or, but then there is this other little piece where these farmers need to be able to connect. To grocery stores a little bit more. Well, that's a community development piece that can then be worked on and. I can do part of that, but then I have how many other parts of my job that need to be looked at as well. And so a community development person can go in and do these little parts of an ag job or, um. Family and consumer science pieces that we can't. Continue out with our day to day tasks, and so on the second page, you'll see we listed some projects. That they might be able to assist with such as the farmer's food local grocery stores, which would be an outlet. And they can help start those up and get producers to come to those. Uh, they would also be able to make producer expectations for producers and farmers clearer. And assist local producers with advertisement, so those are things that, you know, I work with. How do you create a safe product from the farm to the consumer, but I don't work in marketing and, and all of that realm. But a community development person would help with that. And then they would also be able to provide leadership to the health department when they're making their community health assessments. And strategies of work for that year. And then they can serve on committees and work with the get healthy Knox County Coalition and the Knox County Transportation. Knox Public Health and Park Districts. And they would also be able to work with Teen Advisory Council closer with four H, so there's some. Programs like the Real Money Real World program that we put on that a community development person could take that and do it a lot stronger. And, and more schools than what we currently do and reach individuals at the Escape Zone, the Village Network or. Local school districts may be on different levels than what we are already doing within four H. So it is something that we have seen, it's something that we need to start thinking about.
It's a utility player, basically, you can do everything, fill in the blank.
And does OSU, um, help provide the funding for that person too then?
Well, so they would, it would be the, it would be that cost share, so it would be, they would. That you guys would have to do that forty seven thousand five hundred and then OSU would. Do the rest of it, so it would be that cost share position. So it'd be an increase by. That amount. And then the last page, John has used this in the past, I think the last time they updated this was back in nineteen ninety eight when I was still. In, um, middle school. And so I said, would you please update this? And so it is, um. Interesting to look at the value of a dollar and where it goes in terms of farm, in terms of farm shares. And then he included the twenty twenty two Ag Census. That's the newest one we were able to get over by. Any questions for us?
I have none.
No, and we have eleven, I'm fit opening to be doing so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure I'll see you again.
Yeah.
I'll see the family first.
Yeah, yes, Andrea.
Yeah. Alright. I do, I'll leave these, I, this is our projects through the years, so from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five, what the four H projects kind of look like. So.
Did you already give us copy that?
Well, it wasn't completely up today, yeah, this is not, it was, yeah, so that's if you guys want to see that stuff, yes.
Sure, did you wanna see this? I think I have it memorized.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thanks.
I think Randy's here.
Randy's here, yeah, I saw her pop in, yeah, so.
Yeah, we only have, uh, we've got one bid.
Okay.
Was received.
So now we're doing the, uh, bid opening for the Knox County Department of Job and Family Services opportunity, Knox Employment Center, High Ameans Job. Career Quest Event Planner. We have just the, um. The one quote. Proposer business name is Junior Achievement of NCO. Do we have specs as to what we anticipated when the bid?
I did not, cause I. I wasn't sure exactly what to expect, because I didn't know what they had. Yeah, I didn't know what equipment they had, the bidder would have, so it was gonna have to be purchased equipment or rented equipment, so.
So it's junior achievements of more central hardly.
That's correct.
Hey, so, yeah, it appears to me that the, um. Career Quest two thousand twenty five budget, it was sixty nine thousand nine hundred and eighty three dollars and nineteen cents and. It has a breakdown of everything, uh, such as total staff expense, tent, equipment, food. JA USA program and support fee, insurance, office supply, staff mileage and other monthly too. So we do have the one, we'll hand this, uh, over to you, we, we'll need to have copies though, right? Of this for you per record spending.
Not until it's awarded.
Okay. So, appears that if I'm on the right page, the sixty nine thousand figure, so.
Did you repeat that amount?
Yes, sixty nine thousand nine hundred and eighty three dollars and nineteen cents.
Thank you.
And Brandon, just maybe to let know what exactly is this, what are they showing for you?
So this is, uh, helping us to plan the youth career expo event. That will be held on October first at the Energy Field House. Um, we had this event last year.
Yes.
Um, we served, uh, around thirteen hundred students that came through, so.
Yeah, so, so is that the one I went to? Yeah, it was quite, um, big event, had, uh, different contractors there, had, uh, um. They were able to, some of the students were able to see how skillful they were with, uh, it wasn't a, uh, backhoe, but it was, uh. Some kind of a machine for them to move around. So, yeah, and then a lot of hands on stuff.
Yeah.
Otto was there.
Is actually a requirement, so.
Help me out here, that's sixty nine thousand and changes for one of that.
It's for one of them.
And serves about thirteen hundred people.
Um, yes.
So what do they get?
Um.
Sixty nine thousand.
So what do we get for that? So, uh, they will handle all of the, making sure that. All of our vendors, are all of our exhibitors have lunch, they'll make sure that we have tables, tents.
So they set up.
They'd set up the facility, they tear down the facility to make sure everybody has, um, electric available to them, so. Uh, what we learned at the last event was more of our exhibitors needed electric than there were outlets. So, we're, they're gonna have to bring in power packs, um.
When you say exhibitors, can I just throw me a couple examples?
Um, so we had, uh, like Bill was talking about, we had cocozing construction there. And they brought a mini excavator and so the kids would get to, uh, ride on that and kind of figure out, and they had to navigate. Uh, bowling pins and not knock them over. We had a construction company there. That did, uh, the kids got to mix and order and build a wall. Uh, and then at the end, they would learn what they did wrong and this will make the wall fall. Um, we had the fire department there and the kids were timed in, uh, having to hit the sledgehammer to move. The equipment back, uh, to measure the force to open a door to fire, um.
Friends.
We had FT precision was there and they had to assemble, they did an assembly line and they had to assemble, so every, uh, every. Uh, exhibitor has to have a hands on activity for them, so this is not about job selection. Um, this is not about hiring, all of our exhibitors know that, it's purely about exploration. And these, this is what we have available to you career wise, so we provide them with a curriculum ahead of time. Um, they do like six lessons before they get to the event, we'll have big, uh, flags up that will tell them, we'll have. All of the exhibitors, um, in their respective clusters, so that when the kids get there. They'll, they have done the curriculum, they'll know what their top three career clusters are, so they come in, they'll get a bag, it will have like a bingo card in it. Um, with a map, so they know they have to visit their top three career clusters, they also have to visit all four, uh, soft skill stations. So the Ohio means job staff will have a soft skill station at all four corners.
So this is nine through twelve, I think.
Um.
Ages.
No, this is fourteen to twenty four years old.
Twenty.
Yes.
The field house was.
Yes. Yeah.
It'll, we, the county was represented, HR was out there and, and I think they did for nine one one dispatcher.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll have our virtual reality equipment out there again, um, so we, we try to have every single, um. Cluster represented, so every industry is represented out there, um, we have to bring in some, like, we don't have biotech here. Um, so we will bring in some from out of the counties and neighboring counties to, um, to kind of be able to exhibit for the kids, but.
Thanks for educating.
It was a great, yeah, so, um, this year, um, we met with the, um. Superintendents and they have asked us to include eighth grade and tenth grade. So, um, and they want to do this annually so that the kids, every kid in the county will get it twice before they graduate, so.
Thank you.
So exposing them to opportunities to explore what they really may wanna do, what they're good at, what they're enjoying.
That's correct, yes, and so, uh, yeah, thank you.
And you mentioned, there is that, that, there is an education program that the teachers are supposed to do with the students.
Yeah.
So when they go on that day, they have an idea as what's really.
Yes. And then the conversation doesn't stop from there, so, um. Our, the, the funding that we use to, to, um, sponsor this event is for our youth programming, the. Formula of funds that we get for youth programming, so it is open to up to age twenty four by registration, um, and.
You think we had people that were outside the high.
We did, we did, yeah, so, um, what we do is we have them register with us, so we know and then we assign them a time.
Yeah.
Because, uh, you were there last year, we have to, um, schedule a time or we will have. A thousand kids there at the same time, so we have to schedule them, so they are there for ninety minutes onsite. So when we have others register, we'll assign them a time, so they have to come in and check in there so that we know how many and who we have.
You have chaos to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and I, and I think the career navigators have a big role in this too.
So on our steer, our steering committee that's planning all of the activities includes Chris Keaton. Um, from Mount Vernon High School, Shelley Laslow, um, she's career center, but she serves, um. K through eight students across the county and then Sean McCutcheon, who works with the county schools, eleventh and twelfth graders.
Was Beth by half in there, two years.
Um, she's not on the committee, but they bring students and last year the career center actually, um. Had like three exhibiting booths and they brought their senior students in to, to work with the kids, so. You weren't there, Andrea?
I was.
Did you go? Okay, I didn't see you, okay, that was pretty, pretty fantastic event.
It was, yes, it was fun.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And maybe Patel to get Jim Tresswell to come in.
Well, I've already invited him, so they told me to reach back out in August.
You do.
Have to wear a sweater vest.
Yeah, everyone wore a sweater.
Alright, uh, I have a few items to update and Bill, uh, I would like to add just a short executive session at the end with no action to be taken.
Okay.
Update for employment of a public official.
Okay.
Um, so updates, I met with the architect yesterday on the evidence room at the sheriff's office, so we kind of finalized. The scope and he's waving on some information back from the HVAC engineer on. Space and the type of unit and that kind of stuff, so that's kind of the last thing he's waiting on. Um, and then once he sends me that, we'll go out and meet with the sheriff and review that plan with him. And, uh, make sure they're happy and then come back and talk to you about price.
Do you think Chris, I'm a good of a, I'll do it back there.
Chief Chris, I'm good of a, I'll detect there or something, uh, are, are you talking about the existing building upgrading? Yeah, update, upgrade. Not adding on to, but the outside building, okay. To a portion of it, and then leaving a portion of it un. So that's what we're kind of focusing on, and we're working on that, um, really just I think the design's there, there's not much to really design, we're not changing the look of the building, uh, it's about utilities, putting some block walls in there, bringing electric in, and, uh, insulation, lowering the ceiling a little bit inside to make it a little bit easier to heat and cool. The heating and cooling unit is, is gonna be one that, you know, it's not gonna keep it seventy-two degrees, but it might, you know, keep it at sixty-five degrees in the winter, and you know, seventy-five degrees in the summer without humidity and that kind of thing, that's kinda what we're focusing on, since it's finish, and then evidence that is, uh, bio, that kinda stuff will still be housed inside in the evidence room inside, so that's where we focused, so we'll get it together, get it to the sheriff. But he was the architect here yesterday, we met in the morning and kinda reviewed the plan, and I think we're just waiting on that, and then we'll be good to go. Um, I laid out for all of you your CCAO, um, legislative platform, so those came in the mail, and those for all of you to have, and make sure you've got those.
That lunch is Thursday, right?
That is Thursday, they'll be here for lunch, yeah. And then we're going to the county engineer's office after lunch to just kinda take a tour of the facility and that kinda stuff, I think it's at one-thirty, Penny, at the engineer's office.
One.
One.
And our lunch is at eleven fifteen.
Got notified uh, by Ohio Newsroom reporter, they wanted to know, they, they wanted to reach out and talk to someone, well, they, they're asking for a commissioner to talk about the old one Ohio money, so this relates to our opioid money, basically how much we've received, what have we spent. Um, do, do you guys want me to reach out and talk to them about?
That'd be perfect.
I don't, you're probably gonna have all that, so if they want specifics, then I'll owe one of you or have you call, but I'll get a hold of her and, and talk to her about that. Um, okay, public hearing for the comp plan, the comprehensive plan, so we have received the letter from regional planning. Um, they planning next has sent me an updated copy with RPC's requested changes. Everything's in there, Penny is gonna be making copies of that for, for the three of you, but we need to set our hearing dates to have a public hearing for those, so if schedules work, based on when we would adopt this, and then Penny ought to get it in the paper, I was proposing to you that we would do, if possible, Tuesday, April fifteenth, at six o'clock. We'll just do it here in our chapel conference room, and then the following Tuesday, the twenty-second, we would just have it.
Not at ten.
We can't do ten.
CDBG is going to have a public hearing that day, that was kind of the only day we could do it after CDBG's public hearing.
Versus, we could do ten-thirty, probably, we could do a ten-thirty public hearing, so that would be one week apart. On our public hearings, our, our schedules permit, is that what, get commissioners, get six o'clock on the fifteenth, and ten-thirty on the twenty-second.
Is the Monday a holiday, Easter? No, no, okay, that is Easter weekend, right, the nineteenth.
Yeah. Yeah, for the twenty-second, but we would be in session that day, yeah.
Okay.
So it'd just be, both of those would be a session day, but the Tuesday one, when we typically do one night meeting and then one day meeting. So if you're good, you, can we pass a resolution for you to do the public notice on that, Penny?
Second, put it on Thursdays too.
We'll have time Thursday, okay, so, so, Penny prepared.
Do we have to have that in the Mount Vernon news now?
We do.
Or did we?
That was only for bids.
It wasn't for anything else.
Public notice does not take effect until April seventh anyway.
Alright, well Penny, if you'll put that on the agenda Thursday, we could, commissioners adopt that, we'll go at those times, that would be great.
So, oh, you're saying a day on Thursday?
Uh, it would be, sure, you'll be on this Thursday's agenda, but it'll be Tuesday, the fifteenth, at six, and then Tuesday, the twenty-second, at ten-thirty.
Are you doing the six o'clock here?
Yeah, we're in both here.
In the chapter.
Yeah. And then, um, Penny also received from Kay Spurgel and, uh, uh, looking at Knox County Mental Health Recovery Board, they were just notifying us by letter that the ten-year levy that's on the ballot that funds will need to go on the ballot in November of twenty-twenty-five, and so, um, we're not doing anything, I'm just notifying you of that, and then here shortly, Penny will have to bring that before you, for you to approve that to be on the ballot for them, it'll have to come before you for that. Yeah, well, I've got two resolutions relating to that, but I just wanted you to know, we received that letter, Penny, you've entered that, I think into the record, or you may give you this to enter in the record, you already have it, so that'll come back before you, um, as well. So we can get that processed, and Penny will submit it to the board of elections.
Will we have any other, um, things that we need to have on, when's the, uh, job and payment service?
That's not until
Next year.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven, yeah. That's all I have for you today, commissioners.
Gary, I have no updates.
Just that America's two hundred and fiftieth birthday is twenty-twenty-six, and we're working locally with the, um, convention, um, for beer industries, uh, to work on those projects, I mean, silver screen in Knox to South Ray.
Um, then I wanted, uh, that everyone know that maybe watching, that the Mount Vernon City Schools is doing an upgrade to their gymnasium, um, the, the flooring needs to be replaced, and one of the things the land bank did was assist them with the grant, the, to see about, um, having any of the toxins that are in the floor, um, taken out, so that was like a grant for over a hundred and some thousand hours that to deal with that. And, uh, we're optimistic that, uh, that grant will be approved for these schools, and then, uh, want to let people know that, uh, the, we commissioners will be working on, um, more spec- specific guidelines for our senior levy committee, as to the areas that we want that committee to focus on, um, and so that will be something that will be developed.
And I did ask Commissioner, uh, Julie and her board to kinda summarize some of the recommendations that they would like to see, and, and, uh, submit that to us, and I believe I got the, or wait yesterday or today, so I'll kinda compile those, like you see that kinda some language changes, and just kinda, I think as they've done that process for two or three years, and some things they felt like caused confusion, but streamline some of the wording and that kind of stuff.
That'd be good, yes. Um, and then take a motion for executive session, or you have others?
That's it.
Uh, and that's too tough about personnel.
Employment of a public employee.
Motion.
Mr. Luster, yes, Mr. C.
Yes.
Yes, so we will enter into executive session at eleven-twenty, and, um, we will not have any business to conduct, and I assume we'll become all Jason.
No, there's, you're not gonna be any action.
And so then we can go into an adjournment after executive session, so.
Correct.
Uh, that's what we do when we come out of an exam session.